Sort of a slightly open booked style arrangement. Have we actually got many other contracts in that sort of type of arrangement?
We have, yeah, yeah. We certainly for services where we've got constrained budgets, we typically build in visibility of delivery costs through an open book mechanism in a lot of those services now, so it's fairly common.
All right, okay. Questions, Andrew?
Can I go first?
Thank you. I just want to ask you about generic support. It says in the report that that's something that you do for up to 12 weeks. After 12 weeks, is it just cut off then if you've not got somebody sorted? That just seems a bit final.
Yes, it is, it is, it is a bit final because we are really clear this is a preventative service that should get alongside people, work with them on things that are going to improve their kind of resilience etcetera, and then move on from them. So it doesn't become another source of ongoing support to people. Most of the modes of service that it offers are designed to be short term. So we go and do a piece of equipment, we make sure the person knows how to use it, we're content that they're fine with what they're doing, and then we leave them with that and move on. Likewise, if they want to find some voluntary sector organisations or they need a buddy for something, to go shopping with them, for example, we would expect that to be done, for the service to support the person to get into the rhythm of doing that and then leave them again. There will be, there will be, a lot of the outcomes that people want to pursue do involve them having continued support but not from the wellbeing service. So they might be getting continued support from local voluntary organisations, they may be going to local lunch clubs, they may have found a buddy or a neighbour to help them with, you know, some day-to-day activities that they were struggling with etcetera. So the service itself will withdraw, but it should leave behind the agreement of the plan of what the person needed to kind of improve their situation if that's the right thing to do.
Have you, have you in the five years had to just say to someone, well, that's it, that's 12 weeks done, we've not got you sorted out, off you go?
Not as far as I'm aware. When we, when we look at the median length of time people have stayed in the service in the last five years, it's about two weeks.
Right.
So for the vast majority of services, they're really at the early end of the 12-week kind of nominal, kind of maximum that we have in the current contract. The vast majority of people, they come in, they get their issues sorted out and they leave again, and we don't have the problem of having them at 11 and a half weeks still not sorted.
And can I just ask part B then of my question? The assessments that you do at the beginning, do you do a reassessment? I mean, because obviously people's needs change. So how do they get reassessed if their needs change?
So the, there's a couple of things in there. The service, the service doesn't currently have built into it a step that formally reviews that the person is now okay. Obviously, the worker is working alongside them, working through what they need to work through. But the formal mechanism we might build in so that we know that that review stage has happened and there aren't things that are left because the service isn't capable of doing them. We don't have clear line of sight on that. The feedback from the service and from service users is that that isn't a significant problem, but it is our plan in the new contract to build in some contract management information so that we can see, we've got better operational line of sight on that. We got alongside people, we put them in touch with a range of things that they were then going to pursue, and then we formally, formally check in with them at the end of that to say, did that work for you, is that now sorted?
Is that something you're doing now or something you're planning on doing?
It's something that, the service, the service does that now, but it doesn't collect it routinely in management information.
There's nothing worse, I don't think, than being left wondering, wondering if it's sorted itself out, assuming it's sorted. I don't like things like that, so I like to know.
No, no, I can really agree with you. I don't like it either, which is why we're going to build that in as a more formal step with the service going forward because that's really important. The other thing to bear in mind is this is not a one bite of the cherry service. If someone gets to the end of a set of interventions and finds that something hasn't worked for them, the voluntary group is folded, the transport provision is no longer available, they can come back into the wellbeing service and ask again to get support too. So it's not, it's not a once and for all type of service, you can come back again if something hasn't worked or you've got a new problem.
So it's just to support people to get, i.e. at the very early stages, if you need further support, then you signpost it and go into whichever direction you need to go in and picked up by every other service going. Nikki? Mark?
Thank you Chair, thank you Tony and Carl for the, for the report. Oops, it's just a bit, very detailed. And actually, my question is kind of linked to my colleague councillor Key here. I do agree with the report and I think it gives a lot of detail and I will support it. However, if I can just draw you to page 24, paragraph three, and my question is very much around what councillor Key has said about a person might identify that their housing is unfit or unsafe and would be referred to the housing services as the wellbeing service is not the correct service to support the need. Now, for me, health, wellbeing, housing, poverty are all inextricably linked. So my question around that again is, there doesn't seem to be any explanation about, an explanation about a mechanism to check back or fast track if somebody's home is unfit or whatever. And it sounds like you're referring to municipal housing. Housing is housing, so it doesn't matter whether it's municipal or whether it's private. So is there a mechanism, are you planning to put a mechanism in there to just explain, as you have just eloquently explained there, that it's a step in, step out service and then again, if people's needs change, they can access it again? But is there a back check there about housing? Because that's very worrying to me. I come up against that quite a bit. And the back check on housing, whether it's fit or it's not fit, could there be some kind of provision in there or back check in there or mechanism in there to suggest, did that happen for you? Have we progressed with that? Because their needs are going to be associated with something else, not just going to be around housing. I kind of, I know it's a bit of a mishmash, but I think you've got what I'm trying to say there. Thank you Chair, thank you.
Yeah, just hold on on that because I get exactly where you're coming from, Nikki. And Mark, one of the things I've got in here is that, in effect, you talk about the trusted assessor, i.e. going in for small adaptions etcetera. But as Nikki has alluded to, is that there's a lot of homes which are not necessarily fit for purpose and a lot of homes where we can't just, actually, they're people's homes and they have a right, they can't afford to move either and they're perhaps not in, they don't qualify for a home, they live in a semi, the staircase is shocking, the furniture's too big for the size of the room in real person to access around. And in essence, what you're sort of suggesting, I feel, is that there should be a mechanism built into this where we perhaps give guidance, advice, information or something else. Because what we've basically got is people falling over in their own homes on the fact that actually no one's giving them guidance to declutter or change furniture or do something for what I call, it's all right adapting to get into the house with a Zimmer frame, but then you can't get round the sitting room with a Zimmer frame because your furniture's too big or the house, the sitting room's too full etcetera. And I think, are you basically saying that we need an extra provision within the service to, in effect, deal with the housing side better?
Yes, if you can indulge me just slightly to come back on that. Yes, I am saying that. The other thing that I'm saying is, is we have a partner and I know that it's not within our remit, housing is not within our remit, but it kind of does come within our remit under wellbeing. So if, for instance, I, I am contacted, let's take it right down to a basic level. I'm contacted about somebody's concerned about their house, housing isn't my remit, but under wellbeing it is. And if somebody in municipal housing, for instance, says, look, I've got this problem, I then can speak to a colleague in housing services with one of our partners. It's not our remit, but they will listen to what I've got to say. What I'm saying to you is it is within your remit because you're an officer and you can go across there and you've got partners over there and you work with them. So I know that all of those facilities that you've just identified about, Chair's just identified, I should say, about checking to make sure that, we're not financial advisers, but we can offer support and advise, have you done this, have you thought about that, we have to be very careful. So I know all of those things, those mechanisms are in place to, for that and that we would look at that. But I think as it's our service, this is our service, it doesn't belong to another partner, it's very much our service, we're developing it. And you've identified as well, the need is going to grow over the next 10 years with a break clause of five years where you can adjust it again because you know that we've got people who are going to be, we're going to have an older population. So we're preparing for that, we're doing a good job here. My, my concern is, the back check is, another partner takes care of, if it's municipal housing, housing services, or they might, they might well be privately owned and need advice, as Chair has just pointed out. But it's the municipal hiding, the municipal housing side of it that worries me. Is there a, is there a provision, a mechanism in there to say to our housing services, did this get done, have you looked at that? We're short of housing, so it's going to be difficult to move people around, I understand that. But is there a mechanism in there that if a person is asking for help, their house is not fit for purpose and some of them aren't, is there a mechanism in there where we can go back, it's our service, to say, has that been done, has that worked for you, how are we doing with that? And you haven't explained if there's a mechanism in there. What I would like to see is some kind of additional information to that little bit in that paragraph there to safeguard, A, the service that we're trying to provide and also, this is the mechanism that happens when we go back. Given the fact the service is small, short, step in, step out, we do it, we move on. And then if you need to use it again, come back. So I know that, I know it's a bit convoluted, but that's my concern. That little bit there was just my concern. Thank you Chair, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it?
In, in essence, what we're saying is the trusted assessor can multitask and actually his role could be expanded to evaluate a municipal house or actually say, hold on, while I'm here, by the way, we'll do some quick checks and this isn't right, that's not right, and make you aware so you don't fall. Or your house is completely wrong and I'll escalate it to the housing team. And I think that was what I understood when I went through it, that his role could be boosted.
Absolutely. I think what you're describing is some of the real complexities and the boundaries between one service and another. I think, I think probably what I would start with saying is, we, we do currently formally check in with services whether something has been achieved for them or not because we have an outcome set that we ask them to, we ask the service user to say, yes, that outcome was met, no, that outcome wasn't met. So there is, there is some checking mechanism in there currently. So if a service user says, that didn't work, I went where you suggested I go and it didn't get sorted out. So there is a mechanism for that. The other thing which I'm probably doing, the current service is a bit of a disservice in, is what they will do under the generic support label is if, if they come across an issue in an assessment which the wellbeing service can't fix, they're not competent to do it, they're not the right authority, what they will, what they will then potentially offer the service user is, is what we use, use, talk about as being a case management role. So the worker won't arrange for all the windows in the house to be changed, especially if it's, because they're not able to do that as part of the service. What they will do though is stay alongside the service user to, to work through with them, how they get, how do they get that done then? So, so it doesn't, so when we say the service wouldn't do something, it doesn't necessarily mean the service wouldn't then support the service user to get that done by another means. So I take that point on board because that, that paragraph doesn't make that, doesn't make it clear. And to talk about the case management role of generic support workers and their ability to stay alongside service users to make sure they get where they need to get to if it's somewhere else they need to be, does that, does that help?
Thank you, yes it does. I think it just kind of ties in with the 12-week stop.
That's, if you don't mind me saying, that's, so if they don't get the windows changed in 12 weeks, that's the end of it. They haven't got new windows, that's what I was worried about.
Yeah, if you take that point back, but that, you know, I think we were both a bit concerned about the 12-week stop, you know, that, that's maybe not, that's not comfortable. So, you know, the mechanisms, if you take back those points, I think I'd be comfortable with that. Yeah, thank you Chair.
I will absolutely do that. I think the, the, we struggle with the length of time which the service should stay alongside people in terms of delineating it, absolutely. So we've gone, we've gone largely on evidence of what current service users are needing, which is about two weeks on average. We're pretty sure that our service provider, if they have the odd exceptional individual who needs a 13th, 14th, 15th week to get something finished, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be arguing with them about that and I'm sure they wouldn't feel the need to, to be hard and fast about the 12-week thing. So there is, there is an expectation that we are personalising what we're doing even though we have to have some parameters around the service as well. So I hope that, that happens, we wouldn't just let, say, oh, that's not sorted, never mind, bye-bye, your 12 weeks is up because that's, that's obviously not helpful to anybody.
Okay. So in essence, the trusted assessor goes in. Now, we can put a recommendation forward, but if nothing's done about it, it could take 10 years before actually, by which time X number of people have fallen over and it's cost a fortune to the NHS. And that's the whole point here. We need to be flexible to adapt and learn from what's going on. Otherwise, as you say, if we perhaps calculated how many people fall over in their own homes, which is quite a lot, I suspect, and the falls prevention is one of the biggest strategies and impact in of older people, if we don't do anything about what we suggest, then in effect, over the next 10 years, you'll perhaps have maybe 20,000 people falling at costing X thousands of pounds. So.
I, I completely agree with you and falls and falls prevention is a core part of the role of the service. I think that, again, the distinction between what I, what we would expect the housing provider to do, whether that's social, council, private, and what the service would do is, is slightly hard to put hard and fast boundaries about. What we would expect the worker to do though is if someone is, is saying that they're, they're struggling to get around their house safely, because that's one of our key eligibility criteria, or they, they can no longer get to the bathroom, for example, because the bathroom's upstairs and they're struggling with the stairs. We, what we would expect the worker to do then is look holistically at the house and think about what the person, not just look at the, what the person is saying is the problem because older people particularly, we find, obviously, they're very independent minded, they spot a particular problem they want help with and they don't, they don't look at the broader picture. So, so we would expect our workers to go in and look at the broad living situation the person was in and identify things that might go into their plan, which weren't the thing that the service user originally asked for help with because it's obvious that, as you, as you said, we can put a, we can put a grab rail at the front door to make it easy to get in and out of the house, but then, but then the furniture in the hallway is so massive, you won't be able to move around in there once you get in there. So, so the service, the whole, the whole beauty to some extent of relatively undefined generic support is that it is generic and it will look at the broad range of living circumstances that people are in and help them pull together a plan of things that the wellbeing service can do or that the wellbeing service can help them to get other people to do or they can find for themselves if, if that's the right avenue. So, so the, I think we underplay the generic support role of this service quite, quite a lot because it's really important to service users that the worker goes in and goes, what's going on with you then? You rang us because you were a bit worried about your bills, great. But what else is, what else is going on with you that we could, we could make life easier on?
Out of interest, do we know how many people fall over in their own homes each year over the age of 65 on average?
We, we do, we do, we have a lot of information, we have a lot of information on that. The last time I looked at the data, in Lincolnshire over 65 population, there are about half a million for incidences of falls a year in the over 65 population.
Okay. That's a lot. Mark? Then Rob?
Thanks Chairman. Yeah, I've got a number of questions and concerns. The first one has actually just been addressed because I picked up on this case management thing and, you know, what happens, you know? Because obviously, you know, if you are doing a lot of signposting work, obviously you want to be able to put a bit of pressure behind it as well. You know, especially, especially if you're dealing with, say, the district council over housing or something. So I presume as part of the signposting as well, you'd also go to other agencies, you know, if there's a, if there's a, a financial management issue perhaps to the, to the Citizens Advice Bureau, health issue to health, okay, fine. So I'll go back to the questions I've got. The first question is quite funny, based on for me is, how do people access the service initially and what that, and what that interaction is? And my second one, based on the service, you were talking about doing some digital development work. Obviously, not every, not every person over 65 has got the internet. So I'm just wondering what safety mechanisms potentially are there for people who don't have the internet? Because obviously, you know, there's always going to be some that won't and, and therefore may not even have the basic skill, the basic digital skills required. So those are my two sort of service-based questions. Do you want to answer those first because, because I've got a, a couple of questions around finance?
Just hold on the finance. So the first one's how to access the service.
Yeah, and then, and then around, around the, around the digital development, what sort of backstop arrangements have you got in place? Because not everybody's got the internet, you know, or can access it.
I, if you're not, if you're not on the internet type thing, how would you access it?
Yeah.
Just on that note, because this is another point and the reason why I'll boost up on this one. If you look in the back of the CQC report, and I actually Googled even before the CQC report, you Google wellbeing service in Lincolnshire, you get absolutely unindated with every district council, every council, everybody talking about the wellbeing service. And actually, if you look in the back of this report and look at the CQC report, it says it's not easy to navigate and found that it was not always clear to understand who provided the wellbeing service. So it is actually criticised by the CQC. If however you read the report, most, a lot of the referrals are coming from partners and GPs and then there's a big percentage where people are still finding it. I think the biggest percentage is still people doing their own research and finding it. But as Mark says, the whole, and this is another thing to go to the executive, the pathway is not clear. CQC have picked up on this. I've Googled it and it is horrendous because it provides everybody and we can't do anything about that because that's Google and it's the way it is. And in effect, Glenn's response was, well, at least everybody can see something there. But it's not helpful. And I think the fact that CQC have highlighted this and we're here raising it, I think it's fair to have a, it needs addressing.
Absolutely. It does need addressing, it's something that we spotted in Service Review as well. The, the service can be accessed in a range of ways at the moment. So telephone into our customer service centre is probably the main referral mechanism at the moment and anyone can use that channel. So the person themselves, a family member, a neighbour, another professional can use those methods, they can phone CSC, CSC will then pick up the need for referral and will, and will get the wellbeing service assessment process moving. There is, there is a basic electronic way of referring into the service via the service's website. There's a very simple form you could fill and say, I would like to. And that again gets routed, that, that currently roots directly into the service rather than via CSC. The, and the other main mechanism which is becoming more and more popular is a range of frontline practitioners now can refer directly into the wellbeing service on the mosaic customer management system that is used in across all adult care services and some, and a bunch of NHS and other partners have access to it. So at the, at the moment, they were overwhelmingly telephone-based. The vast majority of referrals are still from the people themselves or informal people around them, although the proportion of referrals from professionals is increasing over time as a proportion of, of that. The digital access point is the main area for development, I think, because it's not, as you say, it's not immediately straightforward and obvious about how that links to other referral mechanisms. So there's a specific piece of work in our redevelopment of this for the new provider about, about honing down that, that digital access point and making it tie in better with the other digital access points that, that were available. So we, we spotted that in Service Review too. So it is on our agenda to improve that, improve that for people. On the issue of digital inclusion access at all for people, because there's no point in offering digital, digital help and support and guides to people if they can't, if they can't access it. The service, the, the service will help people get connectivity and it will help people to work out how to use the basics of connectivity as part of the generic support plan, if that's part of the plan that's agreed with the person. For things like telecare, telecare response and alarm systems, they're much more sophisticated now, you don't need broadband access. For those, they will operate over telephone lines, you can even operate them over mobile telephone connections now if, if the environment the person's operating in doesn't lend itself to broadband provisions. So that, 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 I'm less worried about the tele, how people access telecare type technology and alarm systems because there's lots of different ways of doing that now. It doesn't particularly require a lot of skill from the service user to be able to, to use it. As for enabling people to have, generally have access to broadband, the service can support them to do that and learn how to use it as part of the plan. What it can't do obviously is lay cables or build masts and so on in places where the broadband service isn't, is still not where we'd want it to be.
Okay, yeah, Mark?
Just one follow-up on that. And I'm just going back a step now. So you said that people couldn't, couldn't phone up. But obviously, they've got to know the service exists. So one question would be, just go back one stage further, and how is that, how is the service advertised to people so that they're aware of it? And then going on to my, the questions around finance, you were talking, I got the impression with the explanation of how the finances work, that, that it's a cost and volume contract based, based, based on activity. So you work out a basic unit cost per element of service and then the total payment is X, i.e. the unit cost times Y, the number of times that service has been provided. Is that correct? Because coming back on to that then, you were then sort of talking about risks around increases in demand. So obviously, if you've got increasing demands potentially, you spoke about some demographic changes. And obviously, if it is cost and volume based, obviously, your cost will probably stay the same or, or your unit cost will stay the same. But the variable in there is the, is, is the volume, it's the increase in demand and how you manage that. But then potentially, if you then go back to providers and say, well, the volume's going up, so potentially we need to pay you more. But because potentially you are now covering with our increased volume more of your basic fixed cost, can we get a lower unit cost for the extra work? I.e. a marginal cost basis for that extra work? Because in effect, we're giving the provider enough to cover their cost to then find a way of controlling that increase. Do you see where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
That increase of cost.
Yeah.
Through demand. And then you talked about risks. And my final question is, then in terms of managing the contract, what sort of KPIs would you do? And a list of what you think are the financial risks? I'm sorry if it sounds all technical, but that's sort of the stuff I'm interested in. Thanks.
Shall we go in reverse order and like, I can't do it with the more tactical questions.
Pick up the payment mechanism and performance management bit and then, Tony, if you go back to the, to the and then tell me if you go back to the other question. So yes, the payment mechanism is fundamentally a block payment based on delivery of the maximum volumes achievable for that block payment. So we will be seeking then bidders to stretch and maximise what they can deliver in terms of the volumes, subject to our minimum expectations having been set out at the outset. For the core payment, there will be, in addition or separate to that, an additional volume mechanism that will trigger at the point that the core volumes have been exceeded, if they are exceeded. And that will be separate from the notional volume cost in the block payment because we recognise that actually, a lot of the overheads will have been covered within that core anyway. So we would expect that additional volume payment to be lower than the notional core volume payment that features in the block value for the contract. The performance management mechanism will be based on a series of key performance indicators focusing on areas like, similar to the current performance management mechanism, the delivery of outcomes or the achievement of outcomes for individuals. Are they meeting the needs of the people who are receiving the service? That's an important focus for those performance management metrics. But there will also need to be necessarily some measurement of timeliness of delivery and inputs that go into with the service, things like for the response service, are they getting to people within the target time? So, you know, that's a really, really significant element that we need to keep a focus on through that performance management mechanism.
Okay, so in terms of the awareness of the service, the service is advertised largely by the provider of the service rather than by us, although what we facilitate is connectivity through broader-based access systems like connective support so that people can go into connect support. Connect support will find the wellbeing service for them and then link them back out again. So we've done some of the system wiring work, if you like, to make sure the wellbeing service is seen when people search generically for help and support in Lincolnshire. And then the provider does most of the direct marketing, rather than us being involved in doing a lot of direct marketing. What we found with this cycle of contracts, so the contract that's currently running, is because the service was already reasonably well-known because it's been running since 2014 and it's been running roughly under the same brand since 2014, although the provision and arrangements haven't been the same all the time. The awareness, the general awareness level is pretty high about what the service does. In some ways, people don't necessarily need to know about the wellbeing service because if they ring our CSC, which is very well-known as a service contact point, we will direct them to the wellbeing service if the wellbeing service is the right vehicle for them. I think picking up your points, councillor Moffery, about CQC's observations. Obviously, I've read that quite carefully, because there's an opportunity in this redesign to kind of address the things that they've said. And whilst I agree with them that the visibility of the service within the overall digital arrangements needs to be better, so I completely agree with them with that. What I'm slightly less convinced about is the need for every service user to know exactly what the background provision arrangements are for every type of service offer. That's because their suggestion seems to be because people don't know who provides the wellbeing service. That's causing them, that's causing them an issue to some extent. I think the golden point we need to reach is where people don't need to know, they can't see the joins between one area of service provision and the other area of service provision. And because that's the service user's experience, we would want them to have. So I'm not, I'm completely sold on one of the CQC observations about the need to do something about the visibility. What I'm not so sure about is whether it's reasonable to try and have everybody being able to see exactly who's behind every part of the service delivery.
So what you're saying is that not every service needs to be on there because it's about actually you as a person and then we provide what you need.
Well, I think it's more if someone needs a small aid adaptation to their house and they find that the wellbeing service is a service that can help them to do that, is how important is it that they know that the organisation that sits behind the wellbeing service brand is a volunteer sector organisation or a district council or a county council or an NHS organisation? I can see some people would want to know that and it would be quite important to them potentially. I'm not sure how much effort we should, I'll be honest with you, so I'm not sure how much, how we put effort into that in a way that just doesn't muddy the water? Because people are finding the wellbeing service and they're finding another layer behind that which says who the providers of the wellbeing service are. Whereas in fact, all they need to do is access the wellbeing service and have the provision be good and effective and work for them. So I don't know, other colleagues might disagree with me about that, but.
In essence, potentially, the only way to get around some of those issues, I think, is where you had in effect all your district councils all aligned to that whenever they open up a page, it's a standard page on every single website that is identical with the same questions because it's one Lincolnshire approach. And therefore, because the one thing that you will always struggle with is Google will list everything to do with it. So when they go, it's complicated, CQC, that's easy to say, it's a nightmare to deal with. And the only way to actually deal with that is to standardise in effect the landing page of every district council's thing, which actually is perhaps a very good recommendation to put forward.
And that we can certainly work on achieving it.
Just collect your bins all the same across.
I think that's in the low-hanging fruit kind of category of things that we can do, I think.
Yeah. Rob?
Thanks, Chairman. On a positive note, recently, I had a case of a resident who was referred to the wellbeing service and they came back to me and said, A, it was very speedy response and B, they were very satisfied with the support they got. So I thought I'd just pass on that positive note. My questions are firstly, to use the jargon, how much co-production is there in terms of service users having input? I know there's a positive response to the surveys, three hundred responses you had according to the report. But I'm just wondering, I know particularly in the NHS these days, there's a lot of sort of co-production stuff where you've got service users working alongside or working with officers on the service, putting some input into that. And the second question is, and it follows on from some of the remarks colleagues have made about sort of signposting people, what liaison is there with third sector organisations? I'm thinking the case it was quoted, I think councillor Key quoted, people come to the end of the twelve weeks, but what they might need is just a buddy or something like that. And that's the sort of thing that a lot of voluntary organisations provide. I was just wondering if there is signposting going on there as well? Thanks, Chairman.
Absolutely. So the co-production with service users for the current contract was extensive. I wasn't involved in it, I wasn't doing the work. But looking back over the history, there was a lot of engagement with service users about the old model, what went well, what didn't go so well, what people would want to have going forward. So there's quite a lot of it for the old model. This model that we're proposing now, there's been some engagement, but I wouldn't call it co-production. I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation that we would, we've done this review fairly rapidly. So we've gone lightly on some areas of checking with service users about what works, what doesn't work, what they think is really important and what isn't. And I wouldn't be so bold as to call up what we've done co-production, to be honest with you, because it's not been that detailed. One area where we are having ongoing conversations about are the access pathway and the eligibility criteria and whether they make sense to people looking for a service or not. Because that came out as being really quite important about what is this service actually capable of doing and how do I understand what the service means and what it's offering me? So we are doing some more work on that, which is closer to co-production than the other work we've done in review. I'll be completely honest with you about that. In the current service model, the provider actually has a small team of people who are dedicated to developing what they call networks, so network development out from the wellbeing service into other things that are available. And so they're absolutely connecting and signposting people. What they're also doing to some extent as well is trying to support local volunteer sector organisations to develop things that the service is seeing a need for that aren't available yet. So they're both doing the signposting, but they're also going a bit further than that in terms of going out there and saying, is there an organisation that could do something like this? Because we're seeing service users coming through and need, you know, who would benefit from that kind of intervention.
Okay. One other thing that was mentioned in the report, I seem to recall, was a charging model. And then the other area that's sort of mentioned in a sense is the financial assessments and the two go hand in hand. So as I read it, we are potentially going to look at making a charging model within this contract at some point in terms of some of the services will be chargeable. Telecare already is, but I take it we're going to go a bit further?
There's two areas of the service where service users pay for things. Either subscription to the telecare response service, which is paid at a weekly rate.
Yeah.
The other area where service users pay at the moment is if they need a small adaptation like a grab rail, for example, at the front door. The way the wellbeing service operates now is the service user will buy the hand rail and the service will fit it free for them. So there is a charge to the service user in the sense that we say to them, okay, we'll look at what your needs are, we'll point you in the direction of what equipment might be the right equipment to meet that need, we will fit it for you, but you will need to buy it. So that's the deal at the moment. That seems to be fine with service users. So we're planning on carrying that model, same model forward into the new services. We're not looking at adding new charging. Where we are going to talk to the, well, we're talking amongst ourselves and we'll talk to the provider as well, is about if we add different modes of telecare response service in, might the charging model for that be different to the two pound fifty-ish regular subscription model? So just because of the economics, if someone pays two pound fifty a week, every week, all year round and they very rarely call the service, the cost model for that might be slightly different to someone who only pays for a couple of weeks' cover each year in the summer because they're in formal care, they're on holiday and they're not available to respond. So we may see some additional offers with different charging modes attached to them for the telecare response service. But we're not planning on developing charging in any other parts of the service at this point.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I think it's just that, I know that the problem is, is we end up very quickly in a blurred zone where you've got financial assessments to basically, before we can do a service. And why I say that, it's great, if you're under twenty thousand, we pretty much know where you stand, we'll pick up the bill. If you're over, how far over then becomes a sliding scale of complications. And before you know it, it's just another thing that gets in the way and can block speed and which is what this service is about. The final thing which I've really got in here is that the fact that this is a five-year-ten-year deal. My view is, I mean, the report's great, it sums up really well, you've done the work, you've gone out to the public. I think the brand's a strong brand. And now we have it, it has to be built on. Because when we talk about accessibility and understanding of nowhere is, if you keep building on this brand, everybody in the end, people talk and people, and it's an easy thing, the wellbeing service, bang, and then away you go. Therefore, on the back of that, we have trimmed out two services, which was right to trim out. But I think there's other services that need to come in, you know? And I think that that should be part of a strategy going forward for prevention. Because the bottom line is, the nation is not healthy before it hits retirement age. It's running bad on that. And actually, there was, one of the top people was on about it the other day saying that they didn't realise just how unhealthy it is between the north and the south of England and that actually, the whole thing that people are living longer, yes, they are, but people are living longer in different parts of the country with health conditions that are really limiting their life and quality of life. And they hadn't realised the sheer scale of that. And I think when you look at the wellbeing service, the word wellbeing should incorporate actually getting people fit for retirement as well. It's because we, it's all about the preventative strategy. And I think that we've got quite a few bits going on. You've got weight management, smoking cessation and all that. And you could say that's half of a prevention. And in some sense, I know it's not and we have to be careful not to clutter but the whole wellbeing thing. But in effect, it's about the whole approach of prevention really going. And I think there are elements that will want to come into this, elements going forward. We've trimmed out two, we can easily put another one in. And what we shouldn't have to do is wait ten years. If you see something good, it needs to be shaped to be added in and bolted on.
I completely agree with that. And I think the combination of service leads like myself and commercial leads like Carl working together on these things is that we will, we will for the next cycle, I am sure, be in continuous improvement and continuous development mode. Because the health and social care system continues to change really rapidly around us. And one of the strategic benefits of having a strong county-wide wellbeing service in the way that we have it at the moment is that it offers an anchor point or a platform to build from as the needs of the population change and as we change the way we engage with the population. So I completely agree with that. I think the list of things that I would have wanted to have fixed during this review about the system, not about this service, that I haven't been able to fix because we've needed to review this service and give it stability, is reasonably long and I'm sure we will come back around. I'm sure we will, as a system of organisations, come back around the houses on how this service interfaces with all sorts of other services as we go forward.
Yeah. And I mean, on that, you've got Lincolnshire Community Hospital services. And actually, when I looked into that, it's like, well, actually, how much is that falling into this style of category as well? And I know it's not ours, but it's still partners. And it's still about how do we make a service more efficient and better for the people of Lincolnshire? But right, on that note, we'll go into what we're going to put to the executive. So I've made some notes on it. Mike, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Chairman. There's a couple of things I wish to ask the team there. Trusted assessors, do they do some sort of course? Do they have to qualify in some way? And we're not just employing somebody, that was my first question.
And any worker with a certain skill set can reach trusted assessor status and we can train them ourselves to do that. So there isn't a formal training course or recognition for trusted assessors. The wellbeing service workers already do some levels of assessment that support other parts of the service. So trusted in inverted commas, assessor model. So fundamentally, what this means in this case is that the, some of the small aids adaptations for people's houses that might currently for people's houses that might currently require someone to be seen by an occupational therapist because they trip over the margin from a preventative service into something that might be a regulated service. What we're doing is, this is moving the threshold and saying that, on a prescribed basis, wellbeing assessors in future will be able to assess beyond where they're currently assessed and under the delegation from occupational therapists. So that, in this context, that's what trusted assessor means. It's a term that gets used a lot for slightly, with slightly different, slightly different purposes in it. But in this case, it means that wellbeing service will be able to do assessments for types of equipment and adaptation which would currently require the person to be seen by an occupational therapist. So they're trusted to do an extended range of assessments.
Thank you for that.
Who's actually, are they employed by us? Or are they just...?
They'll be, there'll be a cohort of wellbeing service assessors that just have extra training and delegation.
My other question was regarding, what efforts are we going to take to stop duplication of effort because of the multitude of agencies and one person?
Of the four measures that are exceeding their target, one was also exceeding in quarter one, and that was the permanent admissions to residential and nursing care homes for those aged 65 plus. But we have three new measures that are exceeding their target this quarter. They are the proportion of adults with a learning disability or mental health need in receipt of long-term support who've been reviewed. We continue to ensure that clients need our regular review to ensure that they're being met. Our review performance across the board is incredibly positive. So a really good position in terms of ensuring we are seeing and meeting our clients regularly. The second measure is the number of alcohol users that left specialist treatment successfully. Since quarter one, the definition of the measure has been revised so that it aligns with service activity and the National Drug Treatment Monitoring System. We are seeing an increase from the previous quarter, and the service is in a recommissioning phase, and there will be new arrangements from 2024. But a more realistic picture of performance. Similarly to the first measure that I mentioned, carers who have received a review of their needs is also exceeding its target. So again, positive review performance. We have seen obviously a change in this measure in terms of the definition, but this is about making sure actively reflects the capability of the service. There are, of the 13 measures that are achieving their targets, the request for support for new clients aged 65 plus where their outcome was no support or a lower level of support has gone from exceeding to achieving, but still remains a really positive picture. All of the other measures were achieving in quarter one, so there's no change in that overall performance position. It is worth noting, given the previous agenda item, that one of those measures is that 99% of people are supported to improve their, are supported to improve their outcome following a wellbeing intervention. So a really positive and strong service position. As you mentioned, Chairman, there is one measure that is not achieving its target, and that is carers supported in the last 12 months. It didn't achieve its target in quarter one and hasn't done so in quarter two. As we've spoken about previously, this is a 12-month rolling measure. The service has undergone significant change. It does mention in the report around looking at making a change to the target for quarter three. But the Adults Directorship Leadership Team has subsequently discussed this further and feels that it would be appropriate to take the remainder of 2324 to make sure that we are devising appropriate performance measures and targets for April 2024 onwards. So that we've given that appropriate time and focus. We want to ensure that we reflect the work of the Lincolnshire Carers Service and the wider council services which support our carers. It will also enable us to look at benchmarking data if we leave it that little bit longer. Full narratives for all the measures, as always, can be found within the report and on the council website. I'll hand over for any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Andrew and then Mike.
Yeah, it's just on that one target that's not achieving target. And that's, and I'm sure you didn't mean it to come across that way, I would just, but I wouldn't want it to, was that if we don't get a target, we alter the target. And it doesn't sound very good. So I was quite reassured to say we're not going to change it this year. But can you just explain why we might need to change the target? Because it does sound like, oh, we're not going to meet it, so we'll change it.
Yeah, I think there are a number of reasons. I think potentially what we've seen, particularly around some of our carers service, is the change in the service delivery model, and the way that we are recording information onto our case management system often means that perhaps the way we were doing that previously, that actually it hasn't been fully understood and recognised when setting targets. And I think, you know, we always want to look and make sure that we are in line with other authorities, are we benchmarking appropriately? Was it that actually the target, when we set it, was unrealistic for whatever reason? And that actually, we still believe that the service that we're providing is a really strong service, but actually by having a more appropriate and realistic target, then we only want to raise that kind of concern when we believe there's a concern in the kind of service delivery. So there's a number of different factors. I think there is always that reflection midway through a year of, and for the vast majority of measures, we don't change targets. But often it is where there's been a change in service delivery or a way in which that measure is recorded and counted, that maybe we then look at midway through the year and say, actually, this isn't, that target didn't accurately reflect the kind of, what we would class as good performance within the service. And then we're still going to set ourselves a challenging target, but maybe the previous target was unrealistic.
Thank you. And obviously, if it is changed next year, we're looking closely at how you've changed it and why you've changed it. That's what we're here for, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the things that we will look to bring when we set the target for next year for 2425 is, when we set that target, we'll ensure that a clear rationale of why the target has been set at what it is will come to you as well. Not just a figure of 75%, but actually, is that about us being, you know, better than our statistical neighbours or better than the England average? Or actually, is it in the context of a new service delivery and we expect that target to maybe? One of the things we can do as well is profile targets throughout the year. And particularly when we see a new service, we might want to say that in the first part of that service delivery, so in the first two quarters, we may set a lower target than we do in the last two quarters. Because while the service is embedding, we appreciate that some of the recording and collection of data isn't even necessarily to do with actually the service that's being delivered to an end user, it's just getting used to sort of new mechanisms. But actually, that, we can profile that throughout the year. It doesn't have to be a flat 75% at the beginning of the year and the same at the end. We haven't, there aren't, you know, there are 18 measures, it's not a huge number. And we'll make sure that when that comes back to you for setting of 2425, you have all of that information to understand the rationale.
Thank you, Caroline. That's really reassuring, because that's what we're here for, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely.
You know, not to be horrible, we're to look at these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. On page 62, on item PL65, it looks like it's got some very nice percentages there. What would be very useful within the text, if you could say how many clients that we're actually dealing with? Because that would be very useful. And then similarly, going further on into the report, on page 67, we're dealing with safeguarding. Let me just get to it. Again, on safeguarding, there's some commendable bits of information there, but again, what numbers are we dealing with? And on page 73, I was reading about the health checks. We are making progress, and we seem to be doing better than most authorities. However, what could we do or what other means could we use to encourage more people to accept to go and get these health checks? Because if we're in the act of trying to do prevention, it can be done sooner and obviously save them, the health service, additional expense or complications in dealing with an illness, an injury or whatever. Thank you.
Can I just come back on the numbers? I know you've previously asked in other KPIs to have the numbers included. What I will do is, I'll ask for the numbers for every single measure, so to be included in the narrative. So if it's 100% in the narrative, it's clear about the number of cases. And we'll do that across all of the measures, just because I know we've had that mentioned before. So apologies, it's not done in all of them, so I'll pick that up. I don't think we've got anybody here from public health around the health checks, but we can certainly take that back around. I know we've, again, spoken on a number of occasions, haven't we, about how can we, you know, improve the take-up of health checks and the challenges that come along with that?
I think one thing I know is make it, it needs to be made a bit more accessible. If you're my age and my mate, it's like they said to me, well, how do I get there? I've either got to take a day off work and go and have a health check. Because it's a Monday to Friday service. And actually, that would be, you know, and like most things, a lot of guys, and not speaking for the ladies, but a lot of guys take the view that I'm all all right till it all goes wrong. And I think it's just, I didn't bother to start with till I suddenly hit 50 and then think, oh, actually, hold on, we'll go and start the check. Took me four years into it, I did it this year. But I know another friend is like, well, I've got to take a day off work. And actually, that suddenly comes quite a cost just to go and have a health check. So, but on that, but they're not here, so we're asking.
This may be something we should be encouraging employers to give employees time off work for, because it obviously benefits everybody if they have the health checked.
Yeah, trouble is with him, he can't just get two hours off. It's because he's sort of, in effect, on roads and things.
Well, he needs a whole day off then, if that's the case. I mean, you can't put a price on it really, can you?
That's a really good point, Natja. You know, I mean, the majority of people will be employed. So employers do need to, if they want to keep their employees there and happy, health checks are really part of, you know, part of employment and keeping people employed and at work. So it can be incorporated. I know that with the previous, and we talked about wellbeing, you know, we know within local authorities that stuff are well cared for, where their wellbeing needs are met and their mental health needs are met. So health checks are actually a vital part of employment. And if employers are going to be contributing towards employment, employment costs, then surely it makes... And if employers are going to be contributing towards employment, employment costs, then surely it makes sense that this now needs to be pushed forward as something that is just a bit national, it's not, you know, is it not just something to think about? We want people in employment to stay there. So that's a really good point, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, when you're fifty, you can do something about it.
Yeah.
Once you sort of get to, if you've sort of got really high cholesterol and you've done nothing about it, it's going to catch you out later on in the post-sixty-five period. Or take something like prostate cancer, if you actually, the earlier you catch it, there's the better chance you've got to live. And it's quite simple.
They do it in America, Chair. I know they do it in America, you know, health checks are part of your employment status.
Karen? Karen?
You never know if this is going to work now, do you? I'm looking at that screen and it's upside down most of the time. It's very, very off-putting. Um, you would think that it's not beyond the realms of possibility to have doctor's appointments in the evenings for these clinics or Saturday mornings. I, I used to be with Brayford Medical Practice and there used to be one night a week where they did have evening appointments. But I found the GP that I've moved to, whilst they're very good, I don't think that they have that kind of accessibility. And the other thing as well, you have practice nurses that can do an awful lot. And a lot of the time you don't see a GP anyway, you see a practice nurse or someone. Why can't they go out to workplaces? Is it really that difficult? You know, it surely if there was a will, you wouldn't think it would take that much organising, would you?
Simon, you should be able to shred some light on this. You must have written enough comments about it over the, from between us and health.
Thank you.
Gets battered backwards and forwards.
It, it does, yes. And health checks have been around for about, I think, twelve or more years. Um, yeah, I mean, maybe that, that is something, I mean, they are commissioned by the county councils. So maybe in the initial instance, it may be something for the public health team to, to maybe just try as part of the commissioning to, to encourage out of, out of, if you like, standard working hours provision for, for those who are unable to, uh, take time off. I mean, that, 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 that's all I can say really in terms of asking it to be referred to the, you know, to the commissioners of this.
I've got Andrew and Rob.
Yeah, can I just come back on that? I have worked in the past for an employer who actually paid to have medicals for the staff. So we're not actually saying to the employer, you've got to pay for the health check, they get that free. So their contribution is to allow the staff time off to have it. It's a, it's a no-brainer to me. If I was the boss, I would be saying, oh, yes, please, we'll have, we'll have everybody who's over fifty, we'll have them all done. And it will save me having to pay and I don't mind giving them the time to do it. And if one of them is, has got something wrong with them, we'll find out and get it sorted. I think it's something we can really push.
So, Rob?
Uh, yes, I mean, also another aspect, of course, is that a lot of people work shifts. I have members of my family who work shifts, um, so that, uh, they can't necessarily access things during the day or, or even in the evening. I think flexibility is the key thing. And, uh, for most people, obviously evenings or Saturday mornings are probably the best bet. But, uh, I think we have to bear in mind that a lot of people work shifts. So, uh, having a variety of options would be a, a great idea.
So I think just, which page actually is it on? I just want to find it now.
Maybe seventy-three.
Seventy-three. So therefore I think let's make a note then as a forward item. I mean, it might be relatively a small, but let's have that as a forward item and actually try and bottom out and come out with a solution to, I know it doesn't all fit in all our remit, but you know what? Let's try and get it better. Yeah.
You know, and that's not their age limit, so therefore we should be looking at conditioning, maybe perhaps the home.
Yeah.
Like getting people used to have their health checks, so that's a certain thing, because it's going to take pressure off their own jobs.
Yeah. So let's take, that'll be, we'll push that into February's, well, it's actually early March. Because January, unless, I, I think we're, we're so bunged up in January. Um, I think March will give it a better reflection. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that, Caroline. Um, what I will just do before we go on to, in effect, because item seven is the works programme, go straight to item eight and then come back to seven. Item eight is basically the CQC's pilot assessment report. Um, technically we don't have our director here, so one half of me says, do we want a big debate on it now? It's more for noting. It's coming back in January and they're coming back with an action plan on what's been commented in the report. I think it's quite clear the areas in the report that have been highlighted that they want to see an improvement of. And, uh, so an action plan will be coming back in January. Um, if there's. Yeah, we'll do it. Uh, I think us, from our point of view, if there is anything that isn't in the action plan that we feel that we should highlight, then let us know now. Um, Justin, I will invite in. I know we've been rated good and I think that's very good, because how do you give somebody outstanding on their first visit of, of a pilot scheme? Uh, you can't, you've got to go good. And if it was bad, well, then you could go bad. But I think to go outstanding in the, I don't think that's it, not in year one of being the first ever. And we have come out the best, so that's very good. So I think all in all, it's, it's, uh, it's a start of a new system. The fact we led the way, we've come out good on the pilot scheme, I think is brilliant. And, um, you know, and I think further for, further things will come out on the back of it. Do you want to say anything, Justin? Because you've been whipped through the process, thrashed through the process and perhaps part, very much part of the process, so.
Thank you very much, Chair. Uh, just on the point of, um, the five pilot sites really, I've been very pleased in terms of our result. Um, and in particular that we've actually come out as good against all nine of the CQC quality statements. And we're the only one of the pilots that have actually done that. Um, so four of the pilot sites, including ourselves, came out as good overall. Um, and one of them, uh, was requires improvement. But, um, as I say, we were the only one where we had all good and no requires improvement. That said, you know, we're obviously a very ambitious, uh, team and council. And therefore, you know, the areas that CQC have identified as to have a look at further focus, we're keen to, to look at that. But we'll, you know, we, we, we won't just look at those areas if there are any other areas for improvement as well. We will consider those on an ongoing basis as well, because our ambition is to become outstanding. And actually, we believe that there are areas that we are outstanding in already, so. Uh, but in terms of the, in, the, uh, item coming back in January, I think the key point is, you know, we'll pour proposal around, uh, the areas, uh, because some of the, the areas are quite broad that they've identified, so we'll be more specific in terms of where we believe, uh, the best opportunities for improvement are around there. But it, it, it will be an opportunity obviously for, uh, uh, scrutiny committee to look at that and have some input. And that actually, you know, the journey of improvement itself is an opportunity as well, isn't it? So I'll pause there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or anything that was raising for more in terms of gaining a response for January?
Um, I did have a specific question, but if it would be more appropriate for me to ask my question in January, I can do it as around the, the, the issue around autism that they picked up. Um, if you'd prefer me to wait and, and discuss that detail then, Chair, I'm quite happy to do that, I can do that.
The fact autism is on that whole, uh, area to be evaluated.
Yeah.
And an action plan come, but far away on your question, because I think then Justin can take it away.
He can take it back.
Knowing that there will be a response to the autism anyway.
Right then, so, yeah, all right. So, yeah, so, um, it's on page one hundred and six, um, under areas of development. Um, and, and, and the CQC picked up on this. Um, and I want to know why they picked up on that. Has there been an increase in autism identification amongst the population, uh, in general? And also they, they pointed out that it, that autistic people are seen under, um, let me look at my notes, sorry, I might. So mental health, uh, learning disability and adult frailty. Uh, that there was no clear pathway, I think is what they said for autistic people or, or the diagnosis of autism. I find that a bit odd and, and I want to know how they actually arrived at that, where they got that information from? What, what were they looking at? And, and has there been an increase in diagnosis of autism? And what's about Asperger's then? Uh, so autism Asperger's. Um, uh, I just, I was just curious about it really. And, and this will, will this then insignia, we've just been discussing report number six. So will this then have an impact on specialist adult services target? If we take out, um, uh, if we, if we make another pathway for autism, if you like, another, another target for us to look at over autism? But I was really curious about how they, how they spotted that, where they, where they got that from. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I mean, I think the main area in terms of the CQC in, in the report itself said that they didn't have the opportunity to speak to many experts with experience as part of their visit. Um, but they did actually have the opportunity to speak to the Chair of the, uh, co-chair of the All Age Autism Partnership in Lincolnshire, is an expert with experience. And I know that that expert by experience raised, um, some, some questions around the provision of specialist services for people who are, have got autism only and not necessarily a learning disability. So I think that, that, it, the, the, um, CQC had included that based on the conversation, I think, with that expert by experience. Um, we as a council, as well as health colleagues and other partners are engaged in the autism partnership. And we will be looking at those as, as well as other issues. I think the, there is a, the, the, there is traditionally the all, all age autism strategies priorities about, has been about improving access and making reasonable adjustments to all services rather than developing specialist services. So I think, but there is something to look in there around actually, you know, uh, overall in Lincolnshire in terms of actually what specialist services may be needed, are there any gaps? And looking at the overall pathway. Um, traditionally adult social care has been structured around the primary support reasons, which are learning disability, mental health, adult frailty, including, uh, physical disability. So we haven't had a discreet team to look at autism. And again, we've, we, we believe that actually making reasonable adjustments and making sure that we've got experts who understand autism in all of our teams is the way forward really. Um, but we can have a much more in-depth, uh, conversation around the autism agenda, if that was helpful in January. Um, it may be helpful for a future agenda item as well to look at the updated Lincolnshire All Age Autism Strategy, which has been to the Health and Wellbeing Board and, uh, in, endorsed there. But, you know, we could, we could bring that and, and give the scrutiny committee a, a marfuller brief in terms of the autism agenda and, you know, some of the key priorities that have been identified, uh, with experts by experience.
Yeah, I mean, on, on that, I mean, uh, an area which I sort of was reflecting on and looking at that is with autism, bear in mind it's on a scale, isn't it? And it's a sort of a sliding scale and technically we're all on it, but it depends where you are in the scale, isn't it? It's a spectrum.
It is a spectrum.
Um, so if you put like autism on the spectrum, dyslexia on the spectrum and all the other spectrum learning disabilities, I actually think where perhaps people are more disadvantaged is the lack of knowledge throughout the general population. So if somebody that's on a spectrum, you ask a question, they can be quite abrupt back at you. And you think they're either rude or they're this or they're that. And actually they're not that, they're actually have, uh, they're on a spectrum. And in a sense, we aren't very forgiving and adaptable. And in effect, for those people to get decent jobs, they're instantly knocked out because they're on a spectrum. And the impact of being on that spectrum, rather than sometimes inside their heads, is actually some genius stuff if we knew how to access it and they come out with it. Ie, they're actually quite clever, a lot of those people, but in different ways to what perhaps we are often. Although perhaps, you know, and I think sometimes we don't have enough flexibility in modern day life to really accommodate or be, be accommodating for often the people on spectrums. And I don't know how we get that message across better, but it's, anyway. We'll have more debate on the autism. Karen?
I wanted to ask one as well, but I'm happy to wait till January. It was about the financial assessments. There's mention in there about, you know, it raises it as a, as a possible area of, of concern. I'm not massively concerned, but, and it says that they've started to address it. Can we have some detail about what's actually been, not now, January's fine.
Yeah, we can cover that as, as well.
Yeah.
I mean broadly, it's, it's an area that, um, as a directorate, we're aware of already. And it, it does link to some of our commercial arrangements as well, but there are plans in place and moving forward around, um, solutions to those. So we can cover those in terms of the plans and, and an update on that at that point as well. So, yeah. Um, the, the autism, um, comments were also linked in a way to the transitions comments. I think in terms of that, um, you know, making sure that we've got, uh, through all the pathways that we've got that experience and expertise in terms of, uh, supporting people who are autistic. Um, so.
If I may, Chair, I'd, I'd be interested in, in, in having that information. I mean, you can just send it to me if you like, or, uh, but, but, you know, whatever Chair decides. But I'd be interested in, because they, because they pointed it out, uh, that, that's now raised my interest. So now I'd like to look at that, uh, that's why I'm asking really. Uh, it maybe doesn't need to come here, I don't know, it will come up again in January. But for my own personal interest, because they raised it and because I spotted it, I'm now interested in the levels of autism, autism, clear pathways, et cetera. And, and why, why then? We've looked at spec, it's on a spectrum, it's a, a, a scale. Uh, so why, maybe a disability, yeah, but why, why adult frailty? Why, why that, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't fit for me there. So, so I do have some questions around that, about where it sits comfortably, where it should be. And not just shoved into adult frailty or, you know.
Yeah, and, you know, we, uh, as you would expect, we're open to that challenge. Um, I mean, we've already looked at some wider research. The, um, there, there is, uh, some, uh, anecdotal evidence that there may be benefits having a specialist, uh, service. Equally, there are risks about developing specialist services and those becoming overloaded. And, um, so, yeah, I, I think we, we need to look at it, absolutely. Um, so we can, we'll, we'll bring more intelligence to the next meeting in terms of. Yeah. I, I, I think there's wider issues than just the council there though, that we need to look at. So, you know, autism diagnostic in particular, diagnosis in particular. You know, so, uh, that's why I think as well as the, um, the discussion item on CQC, there, there may be benefits in terms of looking at the all age autism strategy as well at some point. Yeah, I, we, just, just, I'll add one other thing in terms of, so we did have, have the opportunity to consider the first draft of the letter from CQC to spot matters of accuracy. And we did raise with them that we felt that some of the comments that were made in the report were, it felt quite heavily swayed by the comments of one or two people. Whereas actually, a lot of our feedback from stakeholders that we'd looked at broadly, so complaints, satisfactions, generally there wasn't, that they weren't coming out in, in the majority of our. feedback loops, so we were a little bit concerned that maybe the comments in the letter were steered by the comments of one or two people, really.
Can you, when they bring the autism, because it's going to come back, but I think it'd be quite good to get some figures on how many are in employment and how many aren't, i.e., what's, because I, it's, reading at this, can more be done to support them? And actually, we need to perhaps get a, we want to just see some figures, are they employed, are they getting jobs? Is the barriers to them having a fulfilled life, and, you know, it's brought up, that's the way I'm reading it.
I think that generally, in terms of the autism agenda, and in terms of the strategy, one of the areas is to actually develop better intelligence around our population who have autism in Lincolnshire, because, you know, there are a lot of people with a condition that's undiagnosed, for one, so...
Mainly older people, I'd say, as well.
But equally, you know, there isn't necessarily, we have got autism as a dedicated chapter in the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment now, which is really good, but there is a need to develop better intelligence around the condition in Lincolnshire, but we'll bring, we'll bring some highlights of what we know.
Yeah, and also in line with the whole learning disability as well. Steve?
Thank you. Actually, I think the way the debate's going is what I would encourage. I mean, I know I'm not on this committee regularly, but I think the whole issue with autism, those on the spectrum, the transfer particularly from young people when they leave the school system, what they can go into is a big issue, and I know causes a lot of anxiety for parents, and I think there's quite a lot being done in the voluntary sector, as well as the main, you know, the sort of council sector, and I think particularly with something like the Rock Foundation, where basically was set up because parents came across a problem, what to do with their youngsters who were on the condition, and so moved forward in that direction. I take the point that those people are very persuasive and can put a lot of discussion forward when it comes to talking to inspectors and so on. However, the issue is there, and as I say, as you say, I don't think it's just autism, it's the whole of that spectrum.
Autism's part of it, but the learning disability becomes bigger in it, and actually, that's why we perhaps want to see the whole picture, and then see what slice of that is then autism, and also dyslexia, or whatever the other elements are, because I think there is a picture here, is how, because when you hear the government speaking currently, it's about, there's a number of people out of work that could be at work, but when you actually read in, it's more that they've got a disability, and I bet it's areas like this, that people are, they come out from school and they're in effect, their aspirations are killed off because they're actually rather than supported to grow and fulfil.
Yeah, it's a really important area, and, you know, welcome, given the agenda more profile at this committee going forward.
Okay, and the only other bit from my point, which it talks about partners, and I go on about this, but I think in this day where we've got financial constraints and everything else going on, I think it's important that we make sure that we're not duplicating and we really consolidate services efficiently with our partners, and I think that's an area, it doesn't mention all the partners in here, they get also done. We are good in Lincolnshire with the fact that we have our joint, our pooled budgets and our, and all of that, but I think we need to go further, and I think sometimes some of our lot are all a bit sluggish in, really, it still gets a bit territorial, and I think we need to keep breaking that boundaries down, and actually, it's all about delivering services for Lincolnshire better.
Yeah, I mean, it was one of our areas of strength, but, yeah, you can always do better, continue to improve.
If you can, just pass those messages back to Martin and the team, so that when they come back in January, it's a bit more meaningful, because they've already had advance warning of what we're sort of, are interested, and there'll be the response to all of the other information. And then my view is, and I've said to Simon, which takes us into the work programme, that we know that there's stuff here, we know that there's work going to be done, and so we will let them come back with the action plans in January, with a view then that we will bring deep dive and put it into the forward plan, our forward plan. Yeah. Okay. Anything, right, well, thank you for that, Justin. Anything else on the CQC, or good on that? Okay, Simon, then we'll go on to the work programme. But I think we've covered that one off as well.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chairman. You've covered most of the elements that perhaps would have been said under this item. The only other thing I would add is that on page eighty to eighty-one, we've got five items listed for the January meeting, and I know that we were discussing, just prior to this meeting, the possibility of deferring one of those, and I will look into that after the, after the meeting, deferring it to the March meeting, because it is going to be a busy agenda in January, with, certainly with the CQC paper as well as the budget. Thank you, Chairman.
The one that I'm looking at maybe deferring is the carers' introduction services, not that I don't want to have it on the agenda, but we've got the budget proposals, we've got the Director of Public Health, and we've got the CQC, and those three items need to be addressed in January, and I think we need to give them all time to make sure we have a good discussion on that.
I would suggest that those three are enough, because they're all big, big topics, and it's not fair to then rush the last one.
No, but then the contract one's part of the CQC, which is why it's on there, so really, the carers' bit is the one to potentially just push back.
We just need to be conscious of time, and once you get to one o'clock, it's, you can't take any more in, I can't. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, thank you all. Mike?
Yeah, I was having a look at the, all the different elements of what has been on previous meetings, and I wondered whether we could sometime next year, look at adult frailty and the long-term conditions, because that would appear that we haven't really discussed that since 2021.
I suppose we have discussed it in different formats...
Yeah, in little bits, but I didn't...
...actually looking at the overall picture, so make a note of that, and we'll...
And your favourite subject, obesity, hasn't really been discussed again. I know we've done it in bits, but I'm wondering whether we should actually do a small section on it.
The thing, obesity is still working in the background, it sits with basically public health, and it's a working group that's in effect coming off the Health and Wellbeing Board, and so there is a subgroup, which is why we haven't really taken it. I do sit on there and have started going. It is interesting, because it's that old dilemma, which actually really highlights at times, where we have quite clever intellectual people that sort of, in effect, write policies, and then sometimes what they need is where we all come in with practicalities, is it going to work, and why is it not? You can have the best strategies, but if it practically doesn't work, it's never going to work. So there is bits, and my view is that actually, with, like obesity, get on and have a go. You know, public health has dragged its feet for so long now, it's escalated into a massive problem, where I think sometimes we are too sluggish, and we need to do pilot schemes and have a go, and see what works, and try and solve the problem, because it's completely out of control. But is it, but it is still, there is things happening, but they're just behind the scenes, but I think we perhaps ought to look at that concept of what goes on behind the scenes, that was sort of, would be nice to get updates, just to know that there, things are nurturing on, rather than just forgotten. Okay. Anything else? Good, okay, well, thank you all for coming. Have a good journey back.